Go ahead.
We can't, I thought I just opened the door, but maybe it's somebody else. It's up to you.
Go ahead and get started.
Oh, there she is.
Done.
All right, I'll call the council budget meeting of May 26th.
To order?
To order.
First item of business is adoption of the agenda. You'll have the short agenda in front of you. What's your pleasure?
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Green with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Litten with the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed likewise. Okay, and the agenda is adopted. First item of regular business is the budget discussion. Turn that over to Mr. Longinette.
Thank you, sir. So I've got a quick PowerPoint, just kind of wanted to do a brief overview of the budget. Not a lot has changed since our last meeting, but I'll kind of go through the highlights of the revenues, expenditures, the two different funds, and then can quickly go through the changes we made since the last meeting, and then we can do questions and discussion after that. So I just wanted to highlight the revenues here for fiscal year 22, '23. Adwarem taxes are just over a million. Sales and use taxes are up from last year at $575,000. Franchise tax, solid waste user fees, I won't read through all of those, you've got copies of that, but just wanted to highlight total revenues are just over $3 million. Expenditures by department, administration, $705,000. Police, just over a million. Fire service, $287,000. Street, non-Powell bill is $40,700, and then Powell bill allocation is $311,000. And then solid waste in recreation, so total expenditures equal total revenues. And this is for the utility fund, so anticipated revenue. And water sewer fund, you see water charges, sewer charges, the Latimore system charges, which we have broken out for the Latimore expenditures on the next slide, and then other revenues and reserve appropriation. And just wanted to note that that reserve appropriation is technically from reserve, but it is a surplus of ARP funds that we're putting in at the end of this year that'll go into reserve, that we're going to pull back out next year to use for the projects that we've discussed at the wastewater treatment plan and the South Main Street water line and those projects. So it's technically coming out of reserve, but it's money that we've just put into reserve. So total revenues there are $2,386,000. And then expenditures by department for the utility fund, administration, just over $516,000. Water operations, just over a million. Sewer, $730,000. Latimore's $54,000. And total expenditures equal total revenues is there as well. We can go through these a little more in detail, there's copies of them in the packet if that's a little small, but just wanted to highlight some of the changes on the fee schedule. We're recommending adding a fence installation permit, and part of that reason is an increase to the zoning compliance permit and the zoning compliance letter. So when we get a zoning permit, we have to go through and check the different uses for the business or the residence that's proposed, look at the setbacks, and compare everything to our UDO and our different ordinances. So that one requires a little bit more review and staff time, so we're recommending an increase to that. I don't know off the top of my head, I think the last, I think this year's fee is $30? Does anybody remember that fee off the top of their head? No, would you look it up? It's on the website. So a small increase to cover the additional staff time and the time that it takes several of us to review that, since we don't have that planner on staff. So we kind of pass it around, and Mike reviews it, I review it, Jessica might review it. So wanted to increase that there. But wanted to put in a fence install permit because we also require the same paperwork when someone gets a fence, but it's much less technical. It's, is it the right height, and is it within the setbacks, or is there a water or sewer line in the way? So wanted to, we either have kept that at 25, which is what the previous permit cost was, or reduced that down to 25, but hopefully get that here in just a second. But wanted to separate that out because that's much less technical, and we do get a number of those, and so didn't want to raise that fee for something that's fairly easy to get done.
So zoning compliance permits, 25. Zoning compliance letter was 25.
Okay, so they were all 25. So the fence install permit is added as a different category and is 25. And then the compliance permit and the compliance letter are 40 and 45, up from 25.
So what's the difference between the permit and the letter?
So compliance letter is if we have a, like if a real estate agent reaches out to us or a developer reaches out and wants to know if this property has water, sewer, or access to garbage pickup, if it's in the city limits, that kind of thing. So we have kind of a template that we have to go in, and again, look up all those kind of standards and then plug them into a letter, and then send that letter to them, so they've got it for sale purposes or marketing purposes.
They're not really asking to do anything, they just want to know.
Correct.
What they might have to do.
Exactly.
Okay.
They just want something in writing from us that says, you know, they're allowed to do these uses or do these things on that property. And so then going down to garbage fees, we found in the county's budget, I think after it was presented to the commissioners, that there, that the manager was recommending an increase in tipping fees at the landfill. Fuel cost, I think, was the main driver of that, but we felt a need to raise those. Rhonda, I think those all went up by a dollar. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so those were a dollar increase to those monthly charges to cover the additional charge that will incur at the landfill when we take garbage over there. It's getting smaller every slide. So this is the, this is the schedule of fees for water and sewer charges. At the top, we wanted to increase the fees for a water tap, three-quarter inch, which is the primary, which is the main type of tap that we end up doing. Parts and pieces are going up, so we wanted to raise those costs. And Mike, what's that currently set at?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty. So a little bit of an increase to cover parts and pieces increasing, and then a little bit of increase just to cover the cost of the employees' work to go out and do those. And then, if you'll remember way back when, when Alicia Melton from NC Rural Water came and presented to us, she said that we could no longer charge a meter tampering fee, which a lot of towns used to do, and that was some legislation that changed that that was passed. And we are still able to bill for damage at cost. So if somebody goes out and breaks the lock and breaks the collar that the lock was hooked to and bends the pipe or something, we can create a bill for replacing those pieces and send that to them, but we can't just charge like a flat fee of $750 or $500, whatever it was previously. But we can still bill for that cost. Any questions there? And so water and sewer rates, the biggest change here was that 2.5% increase, that's why all those are highlighted, because we increased the 2.5% across the board, water and sewer, to all the different tiers. And then the newest addition in here, which wasn't in the last version of the budget, is the Latimore rates that are on there. I know Mr. Litten had brought up a question about that, so we can address that now or address it later, wherever you prefer, sir.
Well, I was just concerned that we'd gone up significantly on them. I can't remember exactly when we did it, a year ago, a year and a half ago. We didn't, we don't have the other information, the study information.
Yeah.
We're still at current contract with them.
Sure. Yeah, we certainly could wait until we have that rate study, or that, yeah, that rate study completed and adjust the rate then if it's needed. I have talked to Mayor Beal, he actually reached out to me and asked if there was going to be any sort of increase. And I said, "It's not a Latimore specific increase, but we are recommending a 2.5% increase across the board." And I didn't get any negative feedback from that. I know Mike and I, mainly Mike, has had conversations with him about different pumps and things they've had to order, and it seems like every time they have to order a new pump or motor, the price goes up, and Mayor Beal recognizes that. So I think if it was a more significant increase, I might have gotten some pushback, but I told him we were just trying to keep up with inflation and those type of things. But I mean, I think it's certainly good to kind of just hold off on anything else if that's all what y'all want to do. And again, it's $1,300 or whatever it is difference, so it's not a ton of money.
Well, that would be if we didn't increase it for the whole fiscal year.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, if it gets increased two months from now, then, yeah.
And then when we looked at the projected expenses compared to budget, we were way under there. I mean, it might have just been we had a good year.
Yeah.
Sometimes you have a really good year, sometimes you have a really bad year.
Yeah.
When it's, when you're comparing the budget, so. That's just my thoughts, I'm open to what other people think.
What are the total users, is it like 117 people?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And because we had looked at trying to find a way to have more people connect on and, but again, that's, if we continue to go up, it might be a deal breaker for Latimore because I don't know what their option is to provide sewer at that point.
I'm sorry, how many total users do we have?
They have about 115, Latimore does.
Latimore?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and within the last year or so, they've added six or seven, I think. So Mayor Beal's been kind of going around the community and trying to get people to add on, to lower that cost for the rest of them, I think. But, yeah, it's a, it's kind of a huge mountain in front of them to kind of overcome that tipping point where it's more cost effective.
So the current rate is 2.5% less than that?
Yes. Yeah, it's $30 plus the $10 charge for the utilities that was built in there.
So, so, so Mr. Litten is asking if we consider waiting until the study's complete before we do any type of change in the fee? Is that correct?
Yes. Once we get the study, the other information, we can make a decision at that time, after the contract ends, or before the contract ends, or we start with a new contract at a new rate.
Which will be when?
February.
February. So we're only talking a couple of months? I guess, really, I don't have a strong opinion, one way or the other. I mean, I understand his point, we did go up significantly last contract, might be a little more.
Was the last contract a year ago?
Two years or 18 months, something like that.
Yeah.
And how much did we go up on them?
That's more than double.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least 10.
We were really behind the eight ball there.
Yeah, I think Rhonda's right. It was 10 the first time, and then it went, they were only paying maybe $15 a month.
They were paying what our insights customers were paying, and we went up to, I think, 30. We went up to 21 or 22, and then we went up to 30.
Yeah.
And then we had to add the $10 to cover the cost of the pumps and lines, which we gave them the option of absorbing on their end, but they don't have the money to do it. So they have to spread it out across their customer base. But they had a 20-year contract at a set rate, so it never increased for 20 years. That's how they got so far behind.
Yeah. Yeah, I could see that.
I think to your point, Mr. Litten, if we're, if it's only six months or so of that increase, so we're losing $500 off of, you know, not increasing the rate, if we come back with the rate study and do have to increase the rate, maybe it gives us some goodwill now to say, "We're not going to do anything until the rate study comes in," and it maybe eases things a little bit there, and we'll still have to have that difficult conversation if the rate goes up, but for now, it at least smoothes things over a little bit. I think it'd be viewed more positively and be more valued than $500, so.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'll take it back down. That's it. All right, so just to kind of go through and hit some of the highlights in the budget, I'd like to just review those, and then if you all don't mind, I'll introduce our representative from Enterprise and let him go over kind of a high level of the Enterprise program, and then answer any questions you all might have, and then we can do additional questions about the budget from there. So just flipping through the budget in front of you for revenues in the general fund, really the only change there was the Enterprise lease buybacks, so them buying back the current vehicles that we have, that influx or that revenue there is in the profit or loss on sale of fixed assets. And so some of that is offset in the other departments' budgets by new leased vehicles, but I'll cover those as well. Flip into the next page for expenditures in administration. Not much change there. We did add $5,000 back in for downtown enhancement. We had taken that out previously, and we're going to just use that capital reserve fund, but to have some flexibility for different things downtown, we put that money back in. We've still got the money in there for the Lead for North Carolina Fellow. I had actually two interviews this week, sent back to the program, our top choice, and I'm waiting here back, so hopefully we'll have somebody locked down and ready to start August 1st, but had two really good candidates, so even if that one doesn't work out and we have to go with another candidate, I was pleased with the caliber of those students and applicants. One other addition in this contracted services line item is listed under MuniCode, is MuniCode Meetings. It is a software that Mr. Saldo found that adds on to the Civic Optimize and the Civic Plus software packages. Civic Plus is who hosts our website, and Civic Optimize is that package that I mentioned last time, where it allows a resident to go on and fill out a form online, and it gets submitted automatically to us. So the MuniCode Meetings module would allow us to assemble agendas and packets in a much more organized manner than we currently do now. Kim had a great system, but kind of modernizing that a little bit is what this would do. It would also allow for some nice interactive meeting components, so it would allow, and jump in here if I'm getting anything wrong, but it would allow for the agenda and things to be displayed on the TVs as we go through the agenda. You all can have the module pulled up on your laptop, and as there's an item that comes up, you can click to vote on it, and then it automatically records the vote and puts that into the meeting minutes. So it's really sort of, we're building the agenda on the front end, and then as we go through the meeting, it's building the minutes kind of on the back end. It allows us to organize the meeting recordings into an online portal that actually will allow you to click on a specific agenda item and jump to that point in the video, so if you wanted to go review something that was previously recorded, you could easily access it. What else am I missing?
That's good.
Okay. It also organizes, you know, the minutes and the agenda documents. Right now, we have a page on the website, but this would be a portal where you can access the videos and the minutes and the agendas all in one place, and all kind of linked together. So for $2,900, I think we're getting a pretty good bang for our buck there to modernize some things and add some more functionality to it.
So the $1,500 collection, what is that contracted service?
What was that before?
That's what the county charges us to hold in an election.
Oh, in the town.
It's an approximation, the bill may be a little bit more, a little bit less, but they charge us.
Yeah.
Depending on how many candidates there are, and there are a lot of little factors that get, that are in that.
Any other questions there? All right, we'll flip to the next page. Police Department expenses. Again, we've got Enterprise in there under contracted services. So I put a note next to that, that it's $48,000 for half the year, so Mr. Albert, our representative from Enterprise, expects those vehicles to be delivered in probably January timeframe. Who knows these days, but that's his approximation. And so we wouldn't start actually paying on the lease until the vehicles arrive. So for half of the year, it's $48,000 for three vehicles in the police department.
Vehicles, what are we talking about?
Three.
What kind?
Oh, right now, they are in the budget as Chevrolet Tahos, because Chevrolet is the only manufacturer that's given Enterprise any numbers or any manufacturer dates. Talked to Mr. Albert and told him that we, you know, are flexible when it comes to, you know, different vehicles. We obviously want to put our officers in a safe and reliable vehicle, and I think SUVs is the thing to stick with, but, you know, we're flexible there. But again, he said that was the only manufacturer they'd actually gotten any information from.
What I don't, you know, the public perception is the officer to ride in luxury vehicles, and with gas being $4.39 a gallon, they're not fuel efficient. And so my hope was that we would look at, we have plenty of agencies throughout North Carolina that have other vehicles, they have officers that patrol 12 hours, 24 hours a day. And I work for a pretty large state agency that, you know, we use sedans. I don't know why we're spending that kind of money to, in a one-square-mile town, to do the same function that a sedan would do, or a smaller SUV, more fuel efficient.
What kind of money, if we went to Ford Explorers, what kind of difference in money is that?
So Enterprise doesn't have the, well, the state contract prices haven't been released yet, so I don't know what the bottom-line dollar would be. Looking at last year's prices, I think it was $4,000 difference between the Ford Explorer and the Tahoe, but not knowing what those prices are going to look like this year, but yeah.
Oh, I mean, that's a ballpark gauge, I mean, that's just, it's a fair enough answer.
But I'm sure they have plenty of sedans within their fleet. I mean, Highway Patrol still uses Dodge Chargers, Chevy PD Chargers. State North Carolina uses Impalas and different types of things through motor fleet. I mean, there's, this fuel option, but the public perception, my perception, it's a luxury vehicle, and we could do more with that money with a different type of vehicle and get the same benefit from patrol.
Any other council member have thoughts on that issue?
But as currently, if we go with Enterprise, that's our only option.
Currently, yes, sir. Yeah, they haven't gotten any word from Dodge or Ford about release dates, order banks, or anything like that.
Dodge has stopped making the Charger in 2003, so Ford hasn't released anything yet.
And there would be, if it's that $4,000 price difference for the Ford Explorers, that's the outright purchase price difference. So if we're talking lease, it's not per vehicle, that's not $4,000 per vehicle per year or So I think that's, I think it's more efficient in a lease if we look at different vehicles because that cost is spread out over the term of the lease, if that makes sense. Is that what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not $4,000.
Added back in. Yes, sir, yeah.
Because you're not purchasing.
Yeah.
The difference in the lease price over a fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
From which we don't know what that is.
He was saying that the running cost on the Tahoe is higher, but over the lease period, it bounces up and it gets the resale higher on it. That's what he explained to us. Is that right, Jessica?
Yeah, yeah, the resale is definitely.
The gentleman from.
Higher on the Tahoe. Oh.
I think it's him, I don't recognize him from anywhere else.
Can you unmute him?
Okay.
Chad, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are you there?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure my microphone was working. I didn't know if you guys could hear me or not.
I think it is, but I think we had our computers muted, so if you want to try it now, I think I've got it turned up.
That's all right, I just was over here warming up, talking to myself, you know, trying to jump in. I just wanted to offer a little bit of a clarification, and I'm Chad, by the way, it's great to meet all of you, I appreciate you having me in your meeting here tonight, I'm so sorry I couldn't make it in person. But to clarify with the Tahos, all of the manufacturers are kind of in-between model years right now, so we saw a very short model year in 2022 across the board through all manufacturers. The Chevy Tahoe is the only one that had come out with any type of intro pricing at all. So the pricing that you're seeing up there is just invoice pricing, there's no government incentives tied to it at all because they have not released those yet. And the Ford Police Interceptor, the Dodge Durango, and the Dodge Charger are basically your other three options if you're looking at a non-pickup truck application. All of those have no pricing available yet, and the order banks are not available to essentially do anything with either. So we expect to see those start to open, I believe the Durango's open in July, Chargers don't open until October, but what you have is just kind of a sporadic number of vehicles that are available between the manufacturers with no pricing available. But then you have to compare that to the demand, obviously you guys have vehicle needs that you can put your officers in. So we're trying to bridge that gap the best we can with what's available at the time. And to kind of clarify, I don't remember who said it, these are not vehicles that are coming out of Enterprise's fleet per se, these are vehicles that we actually order on your behalf. So we'll go direct to the manufacturers, we build these vehicles to spec based on what the department needs, and then when they come in, we handle all the logistics with the aftermarket equipment and things of that nature. So it really is not necessarily what's involved with Enterprise's fleet, because we don't actually own any police vehicles or any of these other ones. We're actually just acquiring these vehicles on your behalf and then passing them through to you on this equity lease program. So I just wanted to kind of clarify a little bit of kind of where the discussions had come from, kind of why that vehicle was in there. But we have the ability to get any pursuit-rated vehicle, it just depends on what's available and what can be built this year.
Chad, while we've got you, I can turn it over to you, and we can just kind of do a, if there are any more details you want to add, I think you had a good bit of kind of the overview there, but, yeah, go ahead if you.
Yeah, go ahead. I'd be glad to. And just for clarification, you guys have the printed document of the kind of 2023 budget document, is that correct?
I'm going to pass it out right now.
You don't have a microphone, Johnny? Could be a little louder. Okay. So what you guys have in front of you now is essentially a one-year document, and what I always like to start with is we, obviously in the background, have put together a multi-year kind of cost-going-forward analysis that shows, you know, obviously you guys, your thing's a little bit different than what we're proposing here, proposing as, you guys need to pay cash, kind of held on the vehicles as long as you can, and then you get rid of them. And this is more of a cash flow and cycle type of program. So in the background, we have put together kind of a cost on forward that shows this. And I want everybody to be clear that this is a program that is annually assessed, though it's not something that you're bound to continue replacing vehicles every year with. Our goal as your fleet partner is to meet with you during budget season every single year, talk with your department heads to get their needs, and then put together a plan to be as proactive. to be as proactive as possible. So just because we have, you guys are able to make those decisions each year based on what the budget availability and what the actual town needs are. So when we're looking at this document that you guys have in front of you, those first seven vehicles on there are actually replacing vehicles that are in the fleet today. So you've got a handful of police vehicles, of which you guys have already discussed, those Tahos in there. The Colorado's and the Silverado's are different departments. I believe some may be part of the street and others may be part of the water department. But essentially, those vehicles are being replaced with brand-new vehicles of a like type. They're going to be spec'd exactly the same to meet the applications that you guys need. That's one thing I also like to touch on with this being, you know, people hear the word lease and they think that it's more of a fixed rate, you know, over mileage, penalties, wear and tear, not very flexible. This program just allows you, it's basically a flexible finance. So you can drive as many miles as you want. It can be manipulated, holes can be drilled, outfit can be done, graphics can be installed. All that stuff applies. And essentially what it does is it allows you to, instead of outlining the type of capital that you see in that first column there, the capitalized price, instead of going out and spending, what is that number down there? $293,000 to replace seven vehicles? You can essentially replace those seven and roll out.